Maybe on Saturday?
It'll be nice.
On Saturday?
That's Saturday.
No, I mean on...
Like Saturday, yeah. Sorry.
You're not very helpful.
Okay.
That was the charge last time.
I don't know. Okay, I thought...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I brought.
Okay, um, yes, so...
Yeah.
I will read it all.
What do you do as...
This part? Oh, you did. You better be back there or she's gonna get... I just show up and say tell me what to do.
I'm teaching you.
Okay, thanks.
There were animals up at the building.
I thought they were...
Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order, please. This is our first Thursday work session. April 5th, 2012. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, we're standing for the indication.
United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this beautiful weather and for all that are gathered here. We ask that you be with those who are sick and would like to be here if they can't. We ask that you just remember all those who fight for us every day in all of our freedoms and that you be with us tonight in this meeting and let us accomplish great things for this great city of Canton. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
My pleasure. All my guests live for tonight. And by way of introduction, I think, you know, I will let you know who we are up here. Some of you know, some of you may not know. I'm Gene Hoggood, the mayor. John Bearsford, council member. Bill Bryan, council member. We have one council member absent, Mr. Hooky Huffman. Our city attorney, Bobby Dyer. City manager, Scott Wood. Council member Jack Goodman. Council member Bob Rush. Council member Glenn Cummins and our city clerk, Susan Stan. Now, we will... We have the honor tonight of presenting a resolution here to our Trelada Garden Club Yard of the Month. I hope I pronounced that right or got close anyway. It's a pretty severe Indian name there, it's gotta be. But if you would, if you would come up and we will, those that are here, I think we may have several. They received an award for the yard, actually Yard of the Month, I guess it is, but it's their public service and community service to our city in maintaining one of the islands near the voter registration office there. So, we really appreciate what they do. They've done that for years but have excelled this time even beyond their, our expectations, I must say. So, I'm gonna read this and then we'll present this to them. Whereas Trelada Garden Club has a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and the harvesting of the riches of their efforts. And whereas the Garden Club seeks to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. And whereas Trelada Garden Club works to preserve our community's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation and hard work. And whereas Trelada Garden Club advocates the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our community and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. And whereas Trelada Garden Club furnishes a challenging and productive activity for its club members, those just learning as well as those having years of experience. Whereas Trelada Garden Club promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of life, and teaches that rewards come from diligent efforts. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Canton does hereby congratulate Trelada Garden Club on being awarded Yard of the Month for the month of April for beautifying the island on Main Street. We appreciate your input.
We feel sorry for you, we're gonna take the island away from us.
We wouldn't do that. Thank you all very much.
Did you turn around that meeting? Oh, yes, we're there.
Oh, okay. We have to scrunch up a little bit. There we go. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Adam, for our agenda consideration to approve agenda...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agenda with the following exception: Under Old Business, Item C, that we postpone discussion and action on Item C under Old Business for ninety to one hundred and twenty days to give this council sufficient time in which to review and look at other possible alternatives and also to obtain the services of a independent local appraisal to give us a value of the proposed building in Idaho City.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? It's good and second motion. Any other discussion on that?
I'd just like to say that as other council members, we discussed this and there are other alternatives and it behooves us to investigate those alternatives. I think everybody sitting at this table is in favor of providing DFAX the facility that they need. The question is just what is the best way we can go about doing that and since there are other alternatives, we behooves us to look at those alternatives.
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully disagree with my companion here, but I think we've talked about this forever and I think DFAX is the one to tell us what kind of alternatives they would desire. And it's not for us to tell them what we want to sell. Let me put it that way. So, I think we should discuss it and vote on it as we said because they have problems they have financing that they have to consider. And if we take ninety to one hundred and twenty days, they might lose that financing. Things might change.
I can insert anyone else. If not, we will have a roll call on this. Mr. Bearsford? The motion is to remove this item from our agenda for one hundred, ninety to one hundred and twenty days to look at other alternatives.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cummins?
Yes?
Excuse me? Mr. Ryan?
No.
Mr. Rush?
No.
Okay. The motion carries and so it will be removed from the agenda at this point for ninety to one hundred and twenty days. All right, now it is time for our ten-minute public input period. Mr. Rush? I'm sorry, Mr. Rust. Sorry about that, both of you, I guess.
You're sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say something nice about this guy. Mayor, City Council, I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the length of the last city council meeting. I was informed after the last meeting that we almost set a record of three hours and nineteen minutes. And I just wanted to look at why that happened. First of all, the public input of about an hour and ten minutes occurred. A lot of people had a lot of things to say. This is extremely important. When residents have something to say, we should give them the time to say it. Most of the time, we want to hear it. There are occasions, but... The second thing, I think, is that the council had some really important issues to discuss and vote upon and sometimes that just takes longer. I just want to say one thing about these two reasons that I think this meeting ran long and that's simple, thank you. Extremely short meetings without public input for city council discussions were partially responsible for some of the current problems that we have in the city. And not allowing the public input is a disaster, in my opinion, and taking too little time to discuss extremely important issues is equally disastrous. So, just wanted to take a minute, even you, Bob, and thank you for all your thoughtful discussions and hard work to solve our city problems. I'd like to get past the problems and get to the opportunities. And once we solve the problems, that's the meeting adjourned to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Kuhl? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Mary Hoggood and council. Thank you for allowing us to speak, as the gentleman said before me. I appreciate that. I moved to Canton, lived here in August with my daughter, who's nine, in the back, Isabel. And we like to ride our bikes in Canton and noticed that there are no bike lanes. And so, I was riding up on the square, your downtown area, a couple of days ago and got stopped by the parking cop and he said, "You can't ride on the sidewalks." And I said, "Well, what to do?" So, he said, "Well, you're really supposed to be..." Maybe I shouldn't have known this already. "You're supposed to be riding with traffic in the lane." And I thought to myself, "I can do that, but I don't really want my nine-year-old riding in traffic." So, I thought I would come to you and find out how we could create bike lanes, especially in, or first, in the downtown area. Those six to eight blocks or four blocks each direction. And then, once we do that, maybe we can move on to Riverstone Parkway or some of the other major thoroughfares in Canton. And it might bring some good light to our city to encourage folks to exercise and use a different mode of transportation other than the gasoline burning cars that we do. So, I'm coming to you to ask, "How do we do that? And what can I, what can I do? Can I go and talk to all of the businesses on the square and say, 'What do you think about this idea?'" Do I talk to people in Canton and get a petition or... I don't know what the process is.
I don't think anyone would like to have bike lanes any more than me. I do know there's some restrictions and some difficulties in doing that, I suspect, in this particular area. You know, as I mentioned to you in an email, I think that on any new construction, it's a must to have bike lanes on a new construction road, I think. The problem is, is how do you do it on an existing situation when it was never built for that? Do you give up arcing or what happens in order to do that? And I don't know, I think Mr. Good may have asked our Public Works Director to take a look and see if there's any way or anything that can be done or what might need to be done to do that. Have you talked to...
I have communicated with our Public Works Director. Let me first of all say, I'm glad you were not ticketed because you're not the only one recently who's been stopped by police.
Well, I would have to try it, so I invite the twenty-dollar ticket if they'd like.
That's more of an inside joke.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
No, I'm joking. But no, Mr. Ken Jimmy and I have communicated. The mayor of right, ma'am, the problem downtown is simply having space to... We don't have the space to create bike lanes without eliminating parking. And if we eliminated parking, that's going to really inflame a lot of business owners downtown. The problem with riding bicycles on the sidewalk comes when people come, step out over the sidewalk from a business. It's dangerous. So, it's a problem and our engineer is aware of it. He's already begun the process of looking at it and we will certainly remain fully considerate of it. We do know that bicycles are increasingly popular with four dollars a gallon gas mode of transportation and I happen to have a little Segway, if you know what that is. And so, you know, alternate transportation too. But it's just impossible or difficult to just create it in the tight confines that we've got, like downtown.
Would you consider giving up one lane of traffic on each side to make a double lane for the bicycles?
We would certainly be considerate of any suggestions or recommendations, but again, as limited as parking is downtown, if we, you know, for every action, there's an opposite equal reaction or whatever that saying is. If we take it, if we take it from somebody right now, somebody else is gonna be unhappy. So, what we need to try to do is, what we need to try to achieve the right balance and our folks will continue to look at it.
Okay. Do you see the engineer? What's the engineer?
Mr. West?
West, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
You have taken your time to be here to bring that issue up. So, I think we, you deserve an answer and as soon as we do an evaluation, if there seems to be any way it can be done or it can't be done, I would ask that our city manager get back with you and let you know.
And I wanted to mention that Arturo from Free Flight is here also, our local bike shop. He's interested. They're also interested, the local bike folks.
I wish we had bike lanes on every street that we have.
Right. Well, maybe we will one day.
Maybe we will. I think we will someday.
Well, I'll stay in touch. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, everybody.
Actually, the state DOT, the state Department of Transportation does include special consideration for bike lanes on some new projects where that space can be achieved. So, there are some, there's some reasons for the city, there's some incentives for the city to incorporate bike lanes when we can. It's just that the particular area you're talking about is probably the most challenging area in the city to achieve bike lanes.
Thank you.
Angie Wiggins?
Good evening, sir. I'm the area rental manager at Enterprise and Car. I'm also a Canton native. I don't know of those big misconceptions last time. We're a national company, but we do hire locally. Seven years, I went to Squaw High School. Seven years ago, I was given the opportunity to be the assistant manager in our Canton location, which led me ultimately to the position I am at right now. During these last eight and a half years with Enterprise, I've also seen many others from Canton given the same opportunity that I have been. And I just wanted to kind of talk about some of the misconceptions. I felt like at the lot, there were all misconceptions. I don't have to do, who this tax would actually hurt, really. One thing is it hurts local employees. You know, we hire locally, Canton native. We have ten employees out of our Canton office currently trying to hire two more. We do support the community by hiring. The benefits paid off the cost, there's obviously a three percent increase in our taxes. We definitely...
Could you, excuse me, something I can't hear. Can you kind of pick up that microphone, get a little bit closer to you there?
Is that better?
Thank you.
Obviously, three percent increase on our taxes would hurt probability, such as our management teams are paid off of. It also hurts Canton residents. Most of our customers are Canton residents. I think that was the biggest misconception last time. People traveling for vacation, people with their cars in service shops, people with their cars in body shops. Just on an average rental, just for our retail customer, the tax would increase the rate by a dollar and five cents, which is, and that's per day. So, it's a huge burden to our customer. It also hurts local businesses. We do a lot of business with our local dealerships, local body shops, local insurance agents, local corporations. It's not all big corporations that we're doing business with. There's a lot of the small, mom-and-pop businesses that are opening in Canton that we're trying to support the tax with. Our business mix, about ten percent of our business in our Canton location is with our local dealerships that are here. We've got four large dealerships here that all support us. It would be referring to them. Twenty-five percent of our business... ...which is a lot of small businesses in Canton. Forty percent of our business here is retail business, people, like I said, that are traveling for vacation, weekend trip, just for personal use. Some people with older cars like to take a little weekend trip. We're able to offer some great retail rates for that and that would put a burden on them. Twenty-three percent of our business is with corporate business, which about fifty percent of that is from local Canton businesses. Not national chains that are here, but local businesses from Fulton, Georgia. I just feel that this tax puts an unfair burden on our business as well as many other Canton businesses and local residents. As a local citizen, as well as part of the business community, I fully support Canton, downtown Canton. I would love to see it prosper, or it prosper, but I don't believe that this tax is the right way to do it. I strongly urge you guys to vote against the tax and really look at who the burden's gonna be put upon with the initial three percent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Corl?
Mr. Mayor, council members. I am the regional controller of Enterprise and Rent a Car and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight and your willingness to postpone your vote from last week to gather some additional information from all parties on the rental exercise tax. This means a lot to us. I'd like to start off by reiterating what Angie said, that we really fully support a vibrant downtown community in Canton. We feel it's good for business, good for the residents, and good for the community. I can't stress this enough. We really are for a strong, growing downtown Canton. We are, however, strongly opposed to the tax and I wanted to outline a couple of reasons for that. First, we don't really believe that one business should be required to carry the entire burden of reenergizing downtown. To re-energize downtown is good for everyone in Canton, whether it be business or a resident, and we believe the support should be from everyone. As Enterprise provides the majority of rentals in Canton... As Enterprise provides the majority of rentals in Canton, almost all of this tax would fall on our company's shoulders, costing our customers in excess of $50,000 a year. That's $50,000 for one of 1,480 businesses in Canton. We would propose including all businesses in a revived downtown business license surcharge, or something like that. If you took that $50,000 and divided it by 1,480 businesses, that would come up to be $33.78 for business in Canton. You know the saying, "Where your money is, that's where your heart is also." We kind of feel that it would be great to have all Canton businesses invested in the downtown revitalization, and not just Enterprise. Secondly, with the advent of the internet, the rental business has become a commodity-based business, driven mainly on rate. The notion that we can pass this tax on to our customers is not guaranteed. We have to produce a profit to stay in business. And kind of to give you a window into our, our recent business, one of our business, biggest of business costs, the price we pay for cars has risen over 15% in the last year, you know, the auto market is, is on the tear right now. Wages are rising, the fuel is approaching $4 a car, and the industry has seen a wave of consolidations over the past several years, and locally, you guys have seen Armada and Hertz Rent A Car close their, their location in business, or their business in Canton, because they weren't able to, I don't know if their issues were, but they weren't able to survive in Canton. So this is not really an, an easy business to be profitable in, and at the same time, provide affordable transportation to Canton residents, who need their car repaired, traveling for business, or going on vacation. Times are tough right now, and an increase in prices would put rentals out of reach for many residents. So one of our main goals is to keep affordable transportation for all residents. Lastly, until this rental tax was proposed, we were moving full speed ahead of relocating to the old Whipple House by 575 and Riverstone Parkway in Canton. Unfortunately, we are now looking to relocate outside the city limits of Canton, in the event this proposed tax is passed, as we are committed, again, to providing affordable transportation to all of our customers, which are mainly the residents of Canton. We urge you to vote against this tax, and allow us to keep our business here, in the city limits. We are also asking the council to pass a resolution stating that the rental tax would not be passed for a five-year period, so that we can be assured if we relocate back into the city, that this would not be a future issue for us. Again, I appreciate you guys looking at all aspects of this, and allowing us to bring our points of view to you tonight. If you have any questions, Angie and I will be here for the rest of the meeting, and we'd be happy to answer any questions before I provide additional information.
I would have one question, do you know how much Enterprise pays the city of Woodstock on an annual basis?
I don't know that I can, but I've finally pointed that out. We are actually, at the moment, talking about going to the city of Woodstock and the city of Cartersville, because we have one business in each one of those cities, and looking at whether we can move outside of those cities as well. Because it really, it does become a burden to our customers, when we continue to add taxes and add fees, and, you know, we've got airports adding stuff on to us, and we've really got, we as a business have to become a little more proactive than we've been. And sometimes what happens is things get passed in the middle of the night, that's why I keep saying, I really appreciate you guys allowing us to please come and be a participant in the, in the conversation, because a lot of times, they just get passed, they don't know about it, they have no, no way to talk about it like so.
Thank you very much. Okay. Items to be considered for our consent agenda include the approval of the March 15 minutes, I believe these are in your packet, and we would be, we would need actually to, I believe, approve those minutes at, at this meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I do have a correction.
Oh, you have a correction, okay, yes you did.
On March 15 meeting, Old Business, item C, that was not Don Chandler.
Yeah.
If, just, has a bit for building house, that's what North said.
Oh, Don Hosfeld, it was Don Hosfeld, not Don Chandler. Right. Was there anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item D, under new business, the vote is incorrect, it is six ayes and one nays, there should be five ayes and one nays.
Okay, very good.
And, excuse, I'm sorry, the other member, and it needs to identify who the nay was.
Although the, it shouldn't have...
But then, yeah, when it's, when anybody, when it's not unanimous, you have to identify who voted and how, and you do that by saying who the nay votes were.
Okay. With tho, with those corrections, is there anything else? We have a motion, and, do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second. Those in favor, assuming if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Those minutes have been approved. The, the acknowledgement of the February the 12th, February 2012 financials, they're attached for your information, or I believe provided to you here for your information, and we will, those will be on our consent agenda as acknowledgement only, informational purposes. Under Old Business, discussion of charter committee provisions and ordinance, this is the second, the NatTin table will be the second opportunity for the adoption of that, so this is discussion period.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As you know, we have to go through a double vote to adopt this, and this meeting is meant for discussion, and so we should be opening up for a point-by-point, if there's necessary for any question or clarification, and address each one of those, and I guess it's up to the council here to ask any questions they may have. They've had three weeks to read it, and they can bring out those questions, and it will be my intention at the next meeting to make that motion for the second, or the second motion for adoption.
On the NatTin, are there any, any questions, any discussions at this point? Okay, if not, we will move to the next item. Under the discussion of the rental motor vehicle excise tax, I will, will say at this point that the Main Street Board is, is working on a program for that possibility, to submit to the, to the council for their consideration, and it may be a period of time, as I understand it, but...
Mr. Mayor, I guess, I got an email from the Main Street Board, and I'll just read the quote, that they'd like to be able to take some more time to provide their strategic initiatives and detailed rental assistance program for our careful and thoughtful consideration, and they're suggesting the May meeting. So I would make the motion that we just postpone it until the May meeting, because we asked them as a council to come back as a plan in the, in the last one, and by automatic, when we postpone, it automatically gets put on this agenda, and they're not ready or prepared, at this point, to give you the answers to what you've asked them for. So my suggestion, the motion would be to postpone it until May, and let them come forward with that plan.
Okay, we have, we have a motion there to postpone that until the May meeting, second, and a second, okay. Now, any discussion, Mr. Ross?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, not necessarily the motion, as I was looking to, because I really, I'm not concerned about the Main Street Board's proposal to use the money, I'm, I'm concerned about the excise tax itself. And, and if I may, when I, when this was first introduced to the council, I thought it was a good idea, because they came up with, with a way to finance a project. But, at the time, and not being aware, since I don't rent cars very often, I thought there was multiple agencies. But as it turns out, this comes out to be essentially a punitive tax. It's one agency to finance something else. Now, if, if that agency leaves, as they may, then we have no income for the Main Street Board anyway. So, you know, we could defeat ourselves, and, but by exit, by enacting the tax, but also, I think that it's just poor planning if we, if we have a punitive tax on one industry. You know, the corollary would be, what happens if, if Enterprise leaves and we have no tax? Do we tax, put an excise tax on subways to protect the sandwich shop? I mean, it doesn't, you know, this kind of a tax doesn't make any sense. But, my understanding is, that in the new, new bill that was passed, that eliminated, eliminates the added alarm tax, there is a provision in there to allow municipalities to, to enact an excise tax to offset the lost revenue from the added alarm tax. So we should look at that, not just that taxing one industry.
What would that excise tax be, Ellen?
Don't know.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. That's the L. Carter, replacement of the added, was it added alarm, excuse me, excise tax on a car?
Mr. Mayor, if, if we follow that line of thinking, then what we should do is throw within hotels and motels that we're currently taxing, and that's an industry. And we probably could go through a couple more, our alcohol tax, and maybe we should do away with that, because now we're attacking the alcohol. And the state set up this program, approved it, so that we could opt to do it, that's what we're looking at to do. And one last point, and I'm going to try to make this as polite as possible, but I take great exception to threats. When people come to Ford Council, I have no problem making the delivery of their concerns and their points, but when they threaten, "If you don't do what we want, we're going to move," I take great exception to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, the, I think the only point is that we're not deciding tonight, anyway, when we're doing this text, and all we're, we did, we did charge the Main Street Committee to come back with a plan, and they're coming back with their strategic initiatives, and, and trying to answer what we asked them to do, and they don't even have the word "excise tax" in there. They're, they're going to come back and, and tell us what they're planning to do, and it will be up to us to determine then, how we would go about funding that, and it may or may not be an excise tax. So I'm just saying, let's take it off, or postpone it until, at which time, we know what's required in terms of funds, and then we can look at the various options as to how you obtain those funds.
We have a motion and a second, to, to, we already discussed it somewhat, I guess, but, so, but we're going to go ahead, and, and I guess that will sort of terminate the discussion, and at least make note that the Main Street Board is working on some type of plan that would be, that would come back to this council, and, and to let them know how, what their plans would be, and then we'd have to decide how, how to fund that if we can.
One quick question, just to clarify, it's May that we're going to take it up again, and not the April voting meeting?
I think the May is right, is that not right?
That's what they asked for the May work session, to present their plan and their strategic initiatives.
So we would be putting this off until that?
Until the May work session.
Until the May work session.
And it may or may not be a suggestion in May, as to whether we proceeded with this tax, or we didn't proceed with the tax, I mean, until we, until they deliver a plan, we don't want to implement a tax to support something that hasn't even been stated. And they've asked for that time to state what they want to do, then we should decide how we're going to do it, or if we're going to do it, and then how we're going to do it.
I couldn't have said it better myself, even though I tried.
We have, we have a motion and a second, those in favor, second time saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Discussion of the, I guess we, we actually did...
C is...
C is no longer there, right? So we'll skip to D. Discussion regarding proposal Cherokee County Council to deal and collect city property We have met briefly with, with the Tax Commissioner and a member of the staff regarding that. I think, personally, I have some concerns that maybe we ought to stay where we are. I, I think there's, they do one thing kind of, that you may not agree with, but they do a lot of partial payments, and that's, to me, a really tough sell, I know they do that. There would also be a, a, perhaps some difficulty in bringing online our prior year taxes, the delinquents that, that may still exist, that would need to be coordinated through them. So, my suggestion is that maybe we not move on this at this time, and until we've got, because we're, we're going to be pushing it late anyway, if we said, "Do it now," to get all that in order, and if we want to come back and maybe think about that for the next, next year, maybe do that. But that's, that's just my suggestion, and I'll open it up. Yes, sir.
Only question I have is, is, I know the city manager has said we, we could save money by doing that, but do we have any comparison of their collection percentage versus ours, their successful collections?
Apparently about the same, what they tell us, it's about the same, about, I think, 97 or 98, or something like that, with it. It sounded like it was about the same. Anyone else have any thoughts, I mean, we can, we will bring... Yes, sir.
Did that include partial payments as being success? I mean, you know...
I'm assuming that was figured in on the percentages, yes.
Yeah.
So, but I, I mean, I don't know to what degree that, you know, what percentage partial payments would have made up in that respect, I don't know. But anyway, we can, we can either decide to continue this discussion at the next meeting, or we can drop it. Do you have any thoughts?
I'll say, let's drop it and stay where we are.
Anyone else? Okay, why don't we just do that, then, that's why I would suggest we do that. All right, out of E, discussion of leak adjustment policy, councilman and comments.
Well, we, as you recall, I told you, because of the complexity and this 13,000 gallon, nobody could ever decide where we got this 13,000 gallons. And working with the city manager and his staff, we tried to develop a simple and fair leak adjustment policy. Couple of premises that we formed, where, the first premise is that really, any leak that occurs after the meter, that the water's gone through, is really the responsibility of the property owner, anyway, and anything that we did was a gesture of goodwill. The second premise is that any leak adjustment that we did as a goodwill gesture was based on that the leak had been repaired, because leaks just don't disappear. So, I went through, and in your packet is a revised leak, how we would give an adjustment, and the concept is that it's fair and equally applied to all customers, that if a customer comes in and has a substantiated leak, they would be compensated in, for anything in addition to one extra month, and that month would apply to every single user. So we would take the average usage over a 12-month period, and for example, say it was 3,000 gallons, and they had a substantial leak of 18,000, or they had a particular month of 18,000 gallons, we would double that month to six, and they would get a leak adjustment of 12,000. If they were a 500,000 gallon user, they would have to have over a million gallons of leak in order to get an adjustment. Again, the most penalty that it applied to that particular customer, again, was one month. And the logic there was very simply put, that if I got a business and I'm using 500,000 gallons, that's a significant cost to my business, and I should be monitoring that on a day-to-day business, on a day-to-day basis, in order to ensure that I don't incur an extra 500,000 gallon loss. So, the, the whole thing was, what's simply applied, and what's fairly applied, and I've got this in here as a proposal, and we can discuss, any councilor can discuss whatever the... this in here as a proposal, and we can discuss, any councilor can discuss whatever they wanna bother.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Now, if you have any, go through that between now and the next meeting.
I would just like to ask the city manager if his staff is comfortable with the leak adjustment policy. Is staff comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Very good. Thank you. Out of F, discussion of reservoir office building. This is, was dealt with at our last meeting briefly, and we'll be back home again this time, so, is there any, any discussion regarding that matter at this point?
We get another bid.
Another proposal. As far as I know, we're still on the, we still have the same information.
I think what the last, the presentation at the last meeting was to go up for bids, if I'm not mistaken, and we, and we said no. And I would have one question, and I'm not sure that anybody here can answer the question, because I understand Mr. Hattabian has a family emergency that he's intending to...
Mr. Blackwell's here from Columbia.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, the question that I had is, I noticed in the paper that it said that Canton may have a permit to take water out of the reservoir by, say, June, and my question is, can we take water out of the reservoir if we don't have a building there with the proper equipment to take the water out? And that, that's the question I had.
Welcome back.
I'm doing well. To answer your question is, yes, that can be done. The city of Canton doesn't have the same stipulations as the Kentucky Area Water Authority does, with taking water from the reservoir. The city of Canton doesn't have to buy by the rules imposed by the Department of Energy or any other, the city of Canton is taking the water directly from the Etowah River. Whereas the Kentucky Area Water Authority is taking the water out of Lake Albu, which is a bad one, badly.
Anything else on that?
One other question. Part of that reservoir issue was also the weirs. That's not on for this little year, but I'd like for you to clarify, how soon does that have to be taken care of, because that was being pushed right along the potential issue here.
It's my understanding that Mr. Hattabian has been in contact with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and they've actually been out to the site inside the last thirty days. And it's their opinion that there is a greater than two-degree variance in the Etowah River, above and below Hickory Lock Creek reservoir. So because of that, they've asked that we, again, study a little bit longer to see what that temperature variation is, and if it's such that it is indeed greater than two degrees, they would amend the biological opinion on the project, and quite possibly, we may not have to install the weirs at all.
Be greater than two degrees or less than two degrees? Variance.
Natural variance in the river.
Oh, but there's a natural variance?
Natural variance of greater than two degrees, which, looking at the data that we currently have, looks like that's the case. So, kinda nullifies their argument that we need to keep, keep it below two degrees.
And a little darkness, like it's dark your living.
That's right.
Although, although the volume at some points, even though there would be a natural variance, the discharge from that lake is gonna, gonna really overwhelm the, the river itself as far as changing that, because of the sheer volume that'll be coming out there at some point. Now, the creek would just have so much in it, obviously, and its volume relative to the river would, would not be nearly so great, I would think.
That is correct. One thing that we have going on our side, and so far is an argument with the service, is that Hickory Lock Creek, below the dam, that the creek has stayed significantly colder since the impoundment began, but the population of Cherokee daughters has actually expanded. So if we make the water colder, it shouldn't hurt the daughters, since the existing population is expanding in Hickory Lock Creek. That's another argument.
One other question about the, the building itself. When we, I remember when we, at this council, lobbied hard for the particular architect to design it, and, and when he did design it, I presume that we gave him a set of specifications?
There were general instructions, yes, sir. How many square feet must be in the building, what...
Okay. And so, and so when, we gave him that instructions, we lobbied for the architect, and he designed the building, and it was the square feet that we stipulated. Nobody here challenged that at that point, but now, after we spent thirty thousand dollars for the design, now we're saying it's too big. I think we're, you know, closing the door, the barn door after the horse is gone.
I'm not sure anybody's saying it is, it is too large, I think that was, that it's too costly. The eighteen hundred square foot, plus whatever else may be associated with it, you know, still seems to be a very, very high per square foot.
Well, but my understanding is that there's seventy-five thousand dollars of specialized electrical equipment, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So the, the cost is really two and a quarter, but that's only an estimate, we haven't had any bids yet. Actually, we voted not to go to bid, so I'm saying we should go to bid.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Actually, if I'm correct, the, the total estimate that I looked at, that's been provided me, brings the total almost to five hundred thousand, if the building itself was four-ten, and the allowances for the special electrical equipment was like eighty-nine thousand, isn't that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
It, it, it isn't really reducing it to two and a quarter, it's, it's four hundred and ten thousand, and, and I don't know that the size is the only issue. We got nine thousand dollars or something like that for awnings. We have a brick exterior that's, and I don't have all the numbers off the top of my head, but a, a brick exterior, should we look at a different exterior than brick and maybe save ten or twelve or thirteen thousand dollars on the exterior? We've got twenty thousand dollars of concrete work for a driveway or whatever it is, access point. So it's more than just the size of the building.
Any other, any other comments? Now, I'm sure this will come back up at our nineteenth meeting, for sure. Okay, let's see. Cole, you gonna be around a little bit or not?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
It seemed like the guy kind of split up the, the issues here, but let's go ahead and, the next item is item A, AKA, under New Business, announcement of the National Transparency Sunny Award from the Sunshine Review. Leo, are you here? You are, would you, would you wanna say a few words about that? Of course, I think one of the goals that we've, we've tried to make, tried to achieve in this city has been openness, and sometimes it makes it more difficult to get through meetings and everything, but that's, that's what it's all about, really, is, is having public input and transparency. And what she's gonna tell us is that it has been recognized here, particularly as far as our website is concerned.
The award was given to two hundred and fourteen government entities.
Pull that, pull that microphone closer to you, please.
The Sunshine Review analyzed six thousand government sites, and as I stated, it was given to two hundred and fourteen government entities. The criteria is based on their ten-point checklist, your lobbying information, your management, financials, your tax information, so on and so forth. And our city was the first city in the state of Georgia to be a county plus, and the county also to be a county plus, the only two.
The only two in, in, in the state of Georgia?
To be a county plus.
Perfect score, right?
So, there's a lot of things that we, we might continue to add on.
Sure.
So, but that's basically just the list.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thanks to you who created that website and developed the program, I wanna personally congratulate you on that award. As I think it was first.
Anyone else have a question or anything? Thank you, Commissioner. That's it. Yeah, the discussion of the sale of the city surplus items, I believe there's an attachment there, didn't seem to be like a, a whole lot of stuff there, but it's just some junkers, looks like, that...
Just don't label it a garage sale, because my wife will be there.
Yeah, don't call it a garage sale.
Can I add one more question?
Yes, sir.
What is a wacky jumping jack?
I'm not sure if I know, Mr. Mayor, can you, can you tell us what that is?
Lawnmower.
Is that a lawnmower, Dave?
Excuse me?
The jumping jack, is that a lawnmower?
No, it's a, it's a compact.
A tapper? What I'm thinking of, a tapper is, you think of it as a tamping machine, a waxer pack, is that what it is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ain't one of those.
On our occasions, I can probably use one.
Okay. Out of C, discussion and possible action, according to this, on the Cherokee County School District's request for the waiver of water and sewer tap fees, that this is on a, I believe on a new school over, to be built over at Riverside area. If you have any thoughts on that, of course, we can, we'll bring this up. I suspect the action would not take place until the nineteenth, unless there's some emergency situation here.
They, they are, they are underway in construction, and it was called, the question was posed, for possible action, but I don't know that it would change the outcome in a way, no, we're not intending to impede their construction anyway, are we, Mark? Is there, is it matter if it's two weeks before the council decides?
They did not give us any sense of urgency like that, so, they have an LD permit, they don't have a building permit yet, so, they're grading, if they've just started grading, so, it's not like they're gonna put them in tomorrow.
They're actually doing the work themselves, aren't they? They're gonna do the tapping themselves, aren't they?
Truckers will, yes, sir.
They're, they're installing the meters too, as I understand, right? But it's the fee, is the question.
I think we need to show good faith in that. To be honest, we know it's a lot of money, and it's quite a bit of money, but I think we need to show good faith for the school system, and particularly in the, in the months ahead, as they begin to deliberate whether or not they're gonna build a new administration building downtown. I think that would be a, you know, a consideration I would hope that they would think about if they do that.
One question I should want to ask, but for everybody's information, where is this new school?
Go ahead, just don't remember, reservoir drive, there at, at...
Corner Drive.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, one question that's kind of sideways on this. A couple of months ago, the local district came to us for waivers of some fees, those weren't tap fees, but they, it was something else.
It was universal alloy. They would do a major expansion.
Yeah, it was, it was, okay, okay, so that doesn't, something related, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Discussion of possible action, Walliska Street water line replacement. This is in conjunction with the LCI project of the streetscapes along Walliska Street. It's been recommended that we have about three sections of water line there that need to be replaced.
Let me be sure council understands clearly what we're asking before. We have three hundred thousand dollars in the water sewer budget this fiscal year that was anticipated to be used to relocate the lift station at Etowah Park. Our engineers, in-house and, and outside engineers, are looking at the necessity of relocating that pump station, meaning they may feel like we may not need to ultimately relocate it, that there may be some, some wet wells and some other mechanical upgrades and some auto-control devices that they think could achieve the same, the desired purposes without relocating it. That decision has not in and of itself been made in finality, but given the schedule of the park, it can be deferred until next fiscal year anyway. But what we are asking is if council would approve the reappropriation of a hundred and fifty or sixty thousand of those, of those three hundred thousand dollars, which were set aside for that purpose, redirect those for this purpose, and then the question of, of the relocation or upgrading of a lift station will come clearer before the beginning of next fiscal year, in which case we would address that at that time.
Ms. Mayor, we know, everybody in this council knows, that we have crumbling infrastructure, and that we can't take too many busted water mains like we've had in the last year or so. So I see, I think anytime we can have existing funds to replace the infrastructure, we need to do it.
I, I would tend to think that this, considering the work that's going on now, that we need to go ahead and do that tonight, I mean, they're, they're working on Walliska Street, as you know, it, it would give us two-week jump over. So I'd say we all go ahead and make that in the form of a motion.
I'll make a motion, then we go ahead with that.
Motion and second, any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor, say the five, saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Discussion of cemetery lot pricing and resolution. Looking at some of those prices there, you know, they're really pretty cheap, but they got a number of jurisdictions and the cemeteries and their pricing. Anybody have any thoughts on those, just, well, special purposes?
I had one, one comment, I mean, because we said we're gonna use the proceeds, the better the cemetery, but I don't think the proceeds are gonna come rolling in pretty quickly, so we're gonna have three hundred dollars this year and three hundred dollars in two thousand and fourteen, so, you know, I'm wondering if we should maybe, in the next year's budget, look at setting aside some money for beautifying the cemetery and then, you know, just...
Maybe more than we normally do, I mean, we, we normally put some in there for routine maintenance, I think.
Yeah, put, put something in to make it look a little prettier, and then take the money from the cemetery and just drop it in the tunnel.
Anyone else?
I would agree with that, I think it collects a lot of people.
I'll say, yeah.
People are just dying to be...
Okay. And of course, that resolution, that's what that resolution says, is that any funds would, that would come from the sale would be that, so, I will, I guess we will look at that at our April nineteenth meeting. Discussion of Smithwick Creek compensatory mitigation monitoring contracts. You know, we got several items here that really, well, they're kinda, kinda spaced out here. Okay, that has to do with the reservoir, as well as item I, J, and K, but I guess first we will take the discussion of Smithwick Creek compensatory mitigation monitoring contracts. I believe that's a contract that has a total cost of around sixty thousand dollars or so. Any thoughts on that, discussion purposes, if this will be, if the action would not occur until the nineteenth?
That's fifteen thousand, perhaps?
That'd be twenty-five percent, I guess. Discussion of the business travel and special events policy, Councilman Conns.
I think to save some time, I'll probably look at it and go to...
We're not thought about that, do you? We need a motion to do that, maybe not during this work session?
No, I was gonna say, we'll probably put that on the consent agenda, but to answer Mr. Rush's question, when we had the leak adjustment, he deferred to the city manager, and I'd like to say that this policy has been reviewed, and I guess I'm speaking for Scott, but we can ask Mr. Wood if he concurs with it, and then we can go from there, and you can ask any questions or discussion.
Yeah, the policy, I, I look at the policy, and we'll, we'll certainly do our best to make the policy work. I think it's an improvement from what we have now, it's always... As is always the case, I might approach some things differently, but I have certainly had fair opportunity to, uh, to buy into it and am comfortable with it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Rush?
I have a question on the mileage expense. Uh, the way I read it, and I'm probably reading it wrong, but it said, to take the convention in Savannah, for instance, it, it says here that we get, we would get mileage to and from Savannah, but the way I read it, it says anytime we would drive around Savannah, we wouldn't get any mileage for that. Uh, is that, is that your understanding? Basically, that's what it states. Yeah, and then, so I, I would say that's, that's...
I think that would, that might need some limit there.
Yeah, and, and the twenty dollars for dinner, uh, I think, I think, I think the, the overall thirty-eight dollars a day is low, uh, just based on, on what you, when you start adding, I mean, I went to IHOP not too long ago and just for breakfast, it was over seven bucks, uh, with tip and coffee and the rest of it, so. And then, I, I remember years ago, we had a salesman working on New York and he got fired because they thought his expense accounts were too high until some of the management went out there and saw how much it cost to buy a dinner in New York. But, uh, so I think twenty for dinner is, you know, at the Marriott, you wouldn't get much more than a hamburger.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The thirty-eight, uh, let me explain the thirty-eight dollars. That is the current policy, thirty-eight dollars is what we do. And our current policy is a little, uh, vague because we call it a per diem, but we treat it as a reimbursable expense. And so I went along with the thirty-eight dollars. Uh, if you go to the, uh, county, they actually use thirty-five dollars, Cherokee County, according to what I saw on their website. And if you go to Woodstock, they have a ridiculous one. Uh, but deeper than that is the concept of what is a policy. A lot of people think that policies, there's the opinion that a policy is written in stone. And then there's the other viewpoint, it is a policy that we try to adhere to, but we can justify variations from it as long as they're justifiable, you just can't vary from it. You stick to the policy, but if you have situations where the policy is not, is just, doesn't, can't apply because of the situation you're talking about, then as long as you have adequate justification, you can vary from that policy.
Bobby, just have to skip breakfast and lunch and have a better dinner. Thinking about that, and if you have other comments, we will look at that April nineteenth meeting, unless somebody has anything else to do with...
Is Mr. Cummins going to amend the provision relative to...
The mileage, yeah. I'll, I'll order that and, and so that incorporates all mileage while on that trip, not just to and from, if that meets with Mr. Rush's point.
So we get to do sightseeing too?
Oh, we just had, otherwise they're taking care of the convention center.
Twenty-five miles from the city, there's about half the time you're out.
To the beach, you tell me. Okay, next item.
One of the side notes on that issue is, then when we say who wants to drive to go to dinner, and nobody's gonna do it.
Discussion of cell phone issuance and usage policy, Mr. Cummins.
Again, we, uh, I believe in January, we ordered the, uh, cell phone, uh, allowance, or we created the cell phone allowance, and all this does is state a policy, again, I believe that Mr. Wood totally concurs with what we've got here, and it just clarifies the two different methods, whether we issue a phone to an employee or to a council member if it's issued, uh, versus the allowance and clarifies what our policy is on that.
What, what is the status of that implementation there?
Well, I think, I think the fifty dollars is already implemented, if I'm not mistaken.
Is it already implemented?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. You already got your fifty dollars?
No, I think, I think that, um, I'm not sure that everybody's enrolled.
Have they, Nathan, help me, do you know, I, I got the impression that, that there might have been one or two council members who had not...
I believe there was one.
Did we get an application, is that what happened?
Well, you have to be pre-qualified for it.
Oh, pre-qualified, okay.
Now, I, I think you need to let them, you were given a choice, council was given a choice, if they want the city or stay with the person who with the allowance, so, so be sure and let finance know. But now, what about the disbursement of those, we want to set them up so that they're routinely dispersed at the first of every month?
Yes, sir.
And I think we were backdating those to February?
Uh, I think there may have been one or two exceptions, a few have issued expense report, so I think that she was taking that into account.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, thank you, anything else?
The only thing is, I just suggest that we put the three policies on the consent agenda next time. We don't have to vote on them individually, if that's all right with the rest of the council.
Well, we'll put them on there, and if, if the, uh, if the council has any particular concern about one, if that question's they wanna ask, we'll take it out with that. Let's see, rule of amendment to the easement agreement for Cottlin Creek. Bobby, you wanna explain that again?
I will. Maybe unclear, but at some point, the city in Cobb area in a wire thirty acquired a property for mitigation purposes, uh, and then mitigation work was done. As part of that, they got an easement across another property to get there. At this point, all we need is the easement to cross. The, the original easement agreement, it was attached by a memo, it, it described various things, construction, mitigation, and so forth. Uh, the property was in foreclosure by the bank and then ultimately sold to Forestar. Forestar has run into some problems because on the record, it looks like they're responsible for some work, the mitigation work, when they're not. And so they've just asked that we amend the easement to make that clear. At this point, we just need a regular easement, or at least that it's already been done.
Okay, everybody understand that?
So there is another item on the consent agenda for...
Yeah, I think, yeah. Uh, I, um, brittle amendment, it's actually J, brittle of sole source equipment for SCADA project. Mr. Rush?
The explanation in the, in the attached information makes it just sensible that we would have the sole source because everything is compatible.
Cole just said, uh, wrong, we might not have had that weird. Is that correct?
Now, that's just, that's...
That's...
...to other stuff, and other things other than, uh, control the gates. Right?
Yes, the, uh, these actuators go along the gates that allow water to be taken from the reservoir station.
Oh, okay. So it's really got nothing to do with temperature control at that point, or might not have?
Correct.
Okay, good, okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, the only, the only point that I bring out this time is both J and K are sort of dependent on place to put them. Are they not, uh, they're not a building or a location, and we've already put the building and location on some sort of hold, so...
The, uh, the actual actuators that, um, was being referenced in Adam Day will go inside the existing control building on the, on the dam. And so far as the SCADA project is concerned, uh, there are plans to put all of the computer hardware, which would operate the SCADA system, support the SCADA system, in the office building. So I guess that, that is...
Was that originally gonna go in that pump station down at, uh, River?
Yes, sir.
Well, I understand, so originally it was scheduled to go there. Okay. Now, my understanding is too, that you can access and manipulate maybe the, the SCADA system from a laptop?
The idea is once the SCADA system is installed, then, then yes, that would be the case, yes. The facility where I am based at, we would, we have a system there, an existing SCADA system that would be integrated with it.
So how much, how much, Nathan, is, is, so access from a laptop too?
Yes, sir.
So in actuality, the, the equipment that we're talking about here could, could go into that pump station?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, it, it makes me smile when you said manipulating it from a laptop, because I just recently purchased a new computer and had a problem, and a fellow that got into my computer and fixed it was in India.
Right.
Maybe, uh, I think the point that you're already there, about this comparison, is that if the SCADA equipment is located in the pump station, and it can be, I'm trying to cover that back the top, but you can imagine if you have a satellite dish or cable box in your house, if you located that satellite dish box or a cable box in your garage, which is separate from your house, it's gonna be mighty inconvenient when you're in there trying to change channels, as far as a maintenance and operational standpoint. I think that's where the authority was controlled, where they said, okay, where the office is gonna be at, we would prefer to locate that equipment there so it's, it's more accessible, you can maintain.
Excellent, okay. Any other question about that one? Sounds like if it's undertaken, if you get back, or some guy named Farooq will be managing the reservoir in India. Okay, uh, and that, and so I'm gonna say we'll, we'll do that on our April nineteenth discussion. And the approval of the advertising SCADA project, uh, I guess that's sort of those okay, doesn't it? Any, any thoughts on that? That's...
Look, it's also goes with, well, we really need to decide where to put it. Okay, we really need to decide whether you're gonna put it in the pump station, or are we gonna move ahead and build the building?
Okay, so that, I mean, Cole, how long from the, from the time there was an authorization to solicit bids until you would award a contract? How long does it take to, to evaluate those bids and how long before equipment would be received?
I have a proposed schedule here, advertisement for bids, if we like to go that way, we proceed around April twenty, so the end of this month. Bid opening would be around June the fifth, recommendation to award around the seventh of June. The project, uh, should be wrapped up around March twenty of two thousand and thirteen.
So it sounds like about six weeks from the time authorization was, was awarded until the time you had, you was awarded bid.
Do you have a schedule on when you thought the building would be built?
If the, uh, the building goes forward, it would, it would be finished roughly at the same time, so that all the rough end of the building would coincide.
So, so if we, if we delay this building too much longer, uh, we might mess up the SCADA system as well.
Let me ask a question, how we could, you, you basically said the SCADA system could be in, put in the pump station. Is it feasible and/or is it too expensive to consider that if we put it in the pump station and if later we decided to build that reservoir building, could it be relocated?
It can be done, but it would be very expensive to do that. If the SCADA system is put inside the pump station, there is an existing fiber optic link between the dam and the pump station. We would have to tap that fiber optic link to make that connection. So if you built the reservoir office, let's say, six months later, we would simply patch into the fiber at the, uh, at the dam in order to be able to have the load control and usage of that computer hardware, which would be located at the pump station. Uh, you know, if, if it ended up being located at the pump station, I would, I would keep it at the pump station. You know, you're gonna, you're just gonna add costs that you don't necessarily have to...
I've got a question, I'm still not clear on, as a practical matter, how bad would it be to have the hardware in the pump station? If you're controlling it from a laptop anyway, how often do you have to actually put your hands on the hardware and, and...
To give you some form of comparison, um, where I'm at, we have a very large SCADA system that runs the facility, and we have people putting their hands on it almost on a daily basis. Now granted, it's much larger than what this is, it's a, it's a bit of a different animal, but, uh, it's still running on the same, uh, service software, same type servers, uh, as would be used here, same iHistoria type, uh, type system, so, you know. It, it has to be, uh, it has to be maintained, is it every day? No, it's not every day. Is it once a week? No, it's not a week.
Well, I, I really, somehow the, the idea just appeals to me of having the hardware, like the original plan, in that building, in that pump house. If it's designed for it, if there's room for it, if, if it's a, it just seems like a good plan to me. If you don't have to get to it every day or every other hour or that kind of thing to, you know, maybe better, and that could significantly reduce the cost of that, possibly significantly reduce the cost of that office building.
I think, uh, I haven't been involved in this on a daily basis as I was before, but I believe the room that was to be dedicated inside the reservoir office building for the SCADA system was something less than around two hundred square feet in the existing design. So reduction in size of two hundred square feet at, you know, two hundred dollars a square foot, we're looking at forty thousand bucks. But, you know, if you, you're not necessarily gonna gain that full of forty thousand dollars because of the kind of scale and building and structure.
Right, you're not gonna gain that, but I'm just talking about if there's already any other, uh, things been done in that pump station to, to have it all there. It's just, I'd just like a little more information on, on how impractical it would be to have it there, because what we're trying to do is, is cut back on this office building and, and a significant...
To be perfectly honest, I think part of the increased cost of the office building itself is because of where it is located on Bus Parkway. There are certain zoning guidelines, building guidelines that are imposed up there, such as the brick that, uh, has been asked for by the developers of Bus Technology Parkway and anyone else who builds up there in that corridor. I think that has something to do with the exterior trappings of the building. Uh, the onings that were mentioned on the building, I think that's actually a bid option. It's not something that we have to do, that could be, be having the thing altogether, even if it were bid, it doesn't really have to be put with that particular option.
Maybe a way to, to approach it while we're having a work session here and kind of just brainstorm it is us to agree on a, on a figure, on a loan, and go back to the architect and say, you know, give us the building, that, that youth estimate will cost this, and then put it out for a bid based on that. I mean, we think five hundred thousand is too much, then, how much do we think is reasonable?
You know, the way you could look at to, to cut seventy-five thousand, for instance, off the cost of this building all at once would be to the generator that's associated with the building, you can include it on the SCADA system, it can be installed along with the SCADA system when it's installed. I know we're just, this is a shell game here, but, you know, that's a, that's a...
Is there not a generator down at the pump, uh, station, there's not, should there be?
No, sir, not, not a week, we talked about that to begin with when the pump station was being built, and that pump station is only used on occasion to fill the reservoir, so therefore there's no reason to pay for a generator that could cost five hundred thousand dollars or more to run one of those pumps, we don't have, or unable to run one.
Unless you had a SCADA system down there and it could function in a dual capacity for both those pumps and the SCADA system.
Well, you know, if you had the SCADA system there and you wanted to have it backed up, a generator of much less size would be needed, you know, you'd be talking...
To then for the...
Forty thousand dollar generator, about five hundred thousand dollars or so.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't it possibly even get down to the bottom line, do we need an office building at all?
Well, I think, you know, initially, Cole, if I remember correctly, about three, three, four years ago, I don't think there was a plan to put a building up there. And it was planned, as I understood at that point, that everything was gonna be in that pump house building, and that's one of the reasons that thing looks sort of like a hotel, it looks awfully nice, don't believe it from the outside.
The original conception of this whole Hickory Lock project was a completely lonely control by the authority. It would be ran for some, like, off Treatment Division on Lake Alexander Field. Now, once the SCADA system is installed, in our reality, we can't...
Can be held. You what?
We can't, we wouldn't be able to control, you could control it from Mumbai, India, if you want. You could control it from Mumbai, India if you wanted to. What's, what's the SCADA system?
So the only purpose then, basically, of the reservoir manager's house is really for the reservoir manager to be present and kind of see what's going on at the reservoir.
And the maintenance facility. Uh, you know, we have, we have a full-time operator up there that stays busy all the time, just trying to make sure the grass is mowed, make sure the lights are on, make sure all our ventilation fans are running, making sure the weir is operated correctly, making sure that the pump station is maintained. We have various multiple sites around Canton where we're doing monitoring, water quality. We have obviously sites that's supposed about over Dawson County, Cochran Creek. We have another site in Dawson County in Shoal Creek where mitigation credits have been bought there. There's millions of dollars being expended, the council's expended, that the authority has expended on different multiple locations other than the dam and the pump station that have to be taken care of.
Well, I would, I would like to see, you know, maybe, maybe, uh, maybe we have Glenn, Bill and John get together and kind of, as a committee, kind of look at this in more detail, come back by the nineteenth and tell us what you think, if that's enough time.
Yeah, I'd like to know why we need an office building there in the first place with the SCADA system.
Well, y'all try to, keep in mind you would be a, a committee so that it would be subject to the open meetings. You would have to, you know, notify the media when, whenever you're going to meet so they can be there.
One understanding I do have is that there, would it be electronics at the dam and that we'd have to build something to hold those electronics, I believe. Is that correct?
The hardware for the SCADA system, the server racks, we, we would like for them to be housed at the dam in the future office building. That's what we would like to say.
But I understand even if we did locate it at the pump station, there would still be some electronic control components that would have to be at the reservoir.
Yes.
And that would have to be housed, but that's a very minimal in size. It's, you know, probably, probably what, six feet high by, you know, eight or so feet wide and maybe two or three feet deep and that really the control side.
The components that you're talking about, let's say, the actuators that we're asking to be self-sourced are roughly the size of the top of this podium and they're on each individual valve. The other components of the SCADA system such as temperatures, sensors, et cetera, maybe as small as a computer speaker throughout the, the places inside the dam there. Uh, you know, personally, it's always been a concern to me, you know, there needs to be a presence up there on a daily basis. That, that is a very high-risk structure. We have a weir up there that is dependent upon two air compressors. If those air compressors go out, that's serious consequences if those air compressors go out because your weir is going to fall on the face of the dam. If, if the lake is full, you're going to flood downstream. So we need somebody to be there to watch that stuff. That's the reason we're asking for a generator up there to make sure. We have a power, if the power stays out for three or four days, we have a way to keep those air compressors going, keep the weir up, keep the dam functioning.
Again, a generator wouldn't require an office building. A generator wouldn't require an office building.
No, but, uh, one other thing I would bring up is that our reservoir operator that works here, you know, every day, uh, he is, has his office inside the pump station there. There's not even a bathroom in there, so, you know...
Okay, any, any other questions? All right. Thank, thank you all very much. Let's see, we are, city manager's report. Do a free thing there real quick, speeding right along. Speedy.
Well, that's got, Ron, we're making very good progress on our engineers report. They're very pleased with the progress there. Hickory Flat, uh, that project is scheduled to begin just within the next couple of weeks, I think. Roof repairs here are basically completed. There's just a very few minor punch list items, primarily some outside cleanup, but we're in good shape there. Serious thanks to, to Janet Pelletier and Crystal Dixon with the, the ledger and the Tribune for encouraging the public to sign up for the Code Red, uh, weather warning system. And I, I may become a little bit of a broken record, but, but that system is, is not going to be worth anything if people are not, not engaged and not signed up for it. So we would continue to encourage the public to, to contact City Hall or else to access our website and, and sign up for the Code Red weather warning system. Uh, was, received one letter today that I thought I would share with you. This citizen says, when I was doing yard work yesterday, the street sweeper came through our neighborhood. A few houses away, someone had left a pile of debris, rocks, branches, et cetera, in the gutter. Rather than drive around the pile, the driver stopped, got out and separated the two big, T O O, two big items from the acceptable debris. He then got back in the rig and swept up the debris. The sweeper seems to clean our neighborhood on a regular basis and that is great and a bit different from what we have experienced in other cities in which we have lived. A thank you and a tip of the cap to the driver for a job well done on a regular basis. One other letter that, uh, we were asked to read tonight is addressed to the mayor, the city council and city of Canton employees. In my time of sorrow, you took the time to remember me and Fred. I greatly appreciate your support. It was an honor to serve with all of you. You are all so special to me. Warmest regards, Amelia Rose. And one other thing I noticed Mr. Russ left, but, uh, you know, his, his comments about, you know, complimenting council on, 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 uh, encouraging public participation in the length of a meeting, of, of our last meeting. What a lot of people don't know is that there was another hour of executive session after all the public had left. It was ten fifteen or ten thirty that night before most of us even got home. And, you know, even when we fight like brothers and sisters up here, and we do, I can tell you, um, about occasions when these people who are paid a mere pittance, if you don't know, uh, go to zoning meetings at night and go to chamber events at seven o'clock in the morning and, and, uh, go to Main Street meetings last night and are here again tonight. And, um, the public really probably doesn't have any idea of, of, of the level of time and energy and contribution and, and unselfishness that it takes to, to do what these folks do. And, uh, again, even when we disagree, I certainly respect and appreciate their service and their sacrifice.
I have, I have one question about the Code Red.
Yes, sir.
What are we as a city doing to get everyone to sign up as opposed to just trusting for the media? Is there any way we can send it? Because I can honestly tell you that I have people in my neighborhood that still don't know that you can sign up to waste management and get points and...
Should we put that on the water bill or something?
I would say insert a something like that.
No, I think that's a good suggestion. I think we, we can, we can take a look at that, maybe putting some sort of notice in with the municipal water bill. But, uh, I know there was a big push when the, uh, the signing program came out and that's probably the truth of the matter. There probably hadn't been, nobody stayed on top of it, but, but I think that's an excellent suggestion with the municipal water bill on, on Code Red, but we'll start to look at that.
Council, any other items? Which really should probably been old business, I guess, with the, that law park status. You got anything on that?
Yeah, I contacted the county, got an overview on the current status because back February, first of February, we approved, uh, parks and said, let's move ahead and get the project going. And as a normal situation, a, a issue came up on some cost factor that has delayed it somewhat, but the project is moving ahead. And, uh, I've seen emails flying back and forth and this is a question. It pertains to the park, but it also pertains to the canoe launch site. And I think there was an issue, if we got a contractor in there for the park, he didn't want to have a contractor in there working on the launch site. I think at launch site, it could be put in rather rapidly.
I think that, Mr. Beresford, I think the concern was that, the question was if we activated, if we went ahead and developed and activated the canoe launch site, would we have to suspend, and, 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 uh, an expectation of use occurred, a practice of use occurred, which we would want to, to happen, would we have to suspend that use for some extended period of time during construction of the park? And, and I, I, I think I got more than, I got, got different, different opinions about that.
Well, my, my question, if we do have funding, how, how much longer do we have? Because sometimes there is a kind of constraint on the funding and I would hate to miss that up to ten.
Well, there, there is no expiration on the funding, but let me, if, if it's all right to ask the city engineer to come up and update us because I know he's been working right along with the, um, EPD and the Corps of Engineers to get the approval for that and I'll also need to clarify, it's not just a canoe launch, this will be a, a regular boat launch where you can put anything in the river that'll practically go in that part of the river. Um, I'd just like to know where we stand on all the approvals.
On the approval process, I, I have finished what I think is the best design for, for the launch. I just have to put together an erosion control plan, get everything, which submitted preliminary information to the U S National Wildlife, the Corps and the EPD for further advances. And Mountain Conservation Trust, they're going to be building the launch and sale and are currently on a project in Dawsonville that has been planned for months and months. So we knew when they're, we know their schedule is to be completed at the beginning of summer, the Dawsonville project they're on now. They don't want to start this within the dead heat of July or August. They're saying, let's shoot for sometime around September and we think that gives us plenty of time. Was, was there any more questions? Now this, I did want to mention one thing. If you're, you saw my design, I believe, I sent it around. But it's not, it's not a strict ramp straight in the river that you could back above that goes into, you, you will have to be able to tuck it, uh, a certain distance down.
Any other...
The ramp is currently there. It's been there for quite some time. Are we going to utilize that at all?
Yes, we are.
And that one does look great.
Uh, no, no, sir. It goes partway. It was built so they could back it. And there were sod fields down there to like a back truck down there with a, with a pump on it. And from there, here it takes the sod fields from, pumping directly from the river. So it goes parallel and stops. There's about an eight to ten foot of vertical rock where it stops. That's all. You know, we still will utilize that vertical difference.
We don't, we don't be able to use that, right? John's going to call it.
Where it's put in its current form?
Yes. Where we, where we're going to build it.
Where we are going to build it?
Yes.
Oh, yes, exactly. Well, well, depending on how you guys want to do it. If we want to let people back down the ramp as close to the water zone, get put up some bollards, then get their canoe or job boat out of the back of the truck or the trailer and carry it a few more feet, put it in the water, that's, that's what we intend on doing.
Right. I know that we came on board, Mayor and I came on five years ago, that was, this was talked about even back then and it's something that we could, I've contributed to, I'm sure he has too, get, get questions asked about that. And they, they want not to be just a canoe launch. They want to be able to take a flat bottom boat and be able to put that in there as well. So I just want to make sure that we're building something that's not just going to strictly put us in something really small because, you know, if you've got something that, say, an elderly person wants to get in a flat bottom boat for it down, then that's, it's going to restrict the legacy of my question.
I, I would say a flat bottom boat would not be out of the question, but I am saying you, it won't be like a boat down at Lake Alton where you have the water where you can back a trailer in, let the boat, uh, take off and the boat's there if you don't have to...
Is there a reason we couldn't do that?
Certain times, at the main uses, uh, times of the year, there's, if there's not that much water, there's three to four feet of water, uh, in the, in the bottom of the channel, I think. And where we're planning on putting it is in what we call normal, normal seasonal times, it's about three to four feet of water.
Sure.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm, of course, I'm there with you and Mr. Bryant, Mr. Beresford. There's a, the media with a spot in, in the, uh, topography and all that. I'm not sure that I've heard any of us talk about parking. Have we talked about parking? Y'all brought the place to that and...
We have, uh, I have with, uh, Mr. Bryant at ACR. Uh, if you, if you want, y'all have those colored maps that I had showed you where the location was? You can kind of, I can kind of show you. I wasn't sure this canoe launch was drawn up.
I didn't mean...
But anyway, yes.
Y'all, y'all planned for it. That's pretty all I have.
If you, if you look at, you see their parking, uh, just a, a little bit of extension and you got perfect access to it. In my opinion, back to the, as far as the simultaneous construction, uh, I think any charitable reasons could possibly restrict the public using that launch during construction of this much bigger size as far as the safety issues, traveling in and out when their hands are moving.
But there would be a problem with the group that's going to be building the launch because...
No, they would be, they, they were, I think they're planning on starting construction if all goes well on the park and I'll celebrate the earliest. So after, we should be completed with the launch, if all goes well with the launch. By then, so we could have it, have it in place. But I really think that should be restricted until the park gets completed.
Any more questions? Anyone else? Thanks, John. Mr. Beresford, you have anything else there?
No, it's, it's, it's moving on as a typical governmental, like, project, not as fast as we'd likely it's happening and, uh, we'll just stay with it.
The only other item under the mayor's report is what I, I would, I would ask, you know, we, we talked about this D-FAC situation and, and everyone, I think, really wants to have them if, if we possibly can, but I think we have an obligation to look at any possible alternatives that are out there that may be a, possibly a win-win for both. At least the city needs, there, there may be some possibilities that would be beneficial, even more beneficial to the city, certainly. Um, and, and having said that, I would like to ask that, uh, Mr. Cummings and, uh, Mr. Goodwin, Mr. Beresford be a committee to take a look at some of these alternatives in, in more depth and, uh, come back to this, uh, council with some suggestions or recommendations regarding that. All right, that's, that's all that I have, so if we have a motion to adjourn, we, we move forward. Have a motion, a second. Those in favor, signal a bounce, hang on. All right, close up. Thank you.